Okay. This meeting of the committee of the whole will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
All right, this is the committee of the whole, the budget. This is March nineteen twenty fifteen, we're at six P. M. And Counselor Capone.
Here.
And Counselor Del Sola.
Here.
And Counselor De Plurio.
Here.
And Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Like, Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
And Counselor Napolitano.
Here.
Counselor Sacheeta.
Here.
And Counselor Sani. And Counselor Semenelli.
Present.
Nine members present, we do a quorum.
Nine members present, we have a quorum, please rise, salute the flag.
Salute the flag, United States of America, and a true republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first piece of business, the only piece of business is a communication from the mayor. The mayor submitted for the FY twenty sixteen water sewer budget with a total of sixteen million five hundred sixteen thousand and six hundred and seven dollars.
What's the pleasure of counsel?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, could we invite Mr. Our auditor, Richard Viskey, forward?
Moved in second to invite our auditor forward, Mr. Viskey, thank you very much.
And...
I would imagine you have...
Presentation, Mr. Viskey?
I do, I'm sorry.
Get off the shelf, thank you.
So if it's all right, what the counsel will do is we'll let our auditor do his presentation first, and then we can entertain questions after that.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
Put together here a brief PowerPoint presentation to go over the fiscal year sixteen Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund budget. Feel free to stop me and ask any questions as I go, otherwise I can take questions at the end. Just a brief overview of what enterprise fund budget is. The enterprise fund budget is designed to establish separate accounting and financial reporting for municipal services when a fee is charged for a good or service. Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund is how we handle the water and sewer operations here. We established that enterprise fund in fiscal year two thousand and twelve. And our enterprise fund is designed to capture all of the direct and indirect costs of the water and sewer department, so no general fund subsidies. The total operating budget for the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund fiscal year two thousand and sixteen before you is sixteen million five hundred sixteen thousand six hundred and seven dollars. Fifteen million nine twenty-seven three fifty-six represents the direct costs, including salaries, expenses, debt service, MWR assessments and such. Five hundred eighty-nine thousand represents indirect costs, which is the health insurance, retirement costs, and any intergovernmental expenses with regard to running the enterprise fund. So some expenses are budgeted in the general fund operating budget, and we charge them back to the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund accordingly. Again, user fees are designed to cover a hundred percent of both direct and indirect costs of the enterprise fund. Also as part of the budget before you have the capital budget portion of the water and sewer. Primary goal of the capital budget within the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund is to preserve and maintain the water, sewer, and stormwater infrastructure of the city. This being an older city, a lot of the infrastructure has exceeded its useful life. Capital improvement dollars are made available through certain organizations, the MWRA and the Clean Water Trust, to that offer low or no interest loans, as well as grant programs. Local Water System Assistance Program is designed to help with the water system and the pipes and relining pipes, replacing new pipes. Influen Infiltration is designed to take stormwater out of sewer lines. Illicit Discharge Detection and Elimination is designed to take sewage out of stormwater. And some of the other improvements will be funded through bonding, retained earnings, and other available funds. Capital budget for two thousand and sixteen is proposed to be three million one hundred sixty-three thousand dollars. Including in that is a five hundred thousand dollar loan from the MWRA for water main replacement. Currently, we have two million eighty-eight thousand dollars available for sewer inflow and infiltration projects. Fifty-five percent of that is funded with a zero interest loan. Forty-five percent of that money is actually grant dollars, so it's a pretty good program. We're recommended two hundred thousand dollars for sewer and stormwater improvement programs from the retained earnings. As you may know, we had two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars of retained earnings for fiscal year fifteen. That was the result of the fiscal year fourteen operation, so we actually generated free cash in the enterprise fund. And then three department vehicles of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is recommended to fund with bonding proceeds. As part of the enterprise fund budget, we put in there the MWRA water and sewer rate survey they do each and every year. I have the entire survey with me, it's a thick book, but I pulled out what I think are the interesting things for the counsel and the public to look at. Average water and sewer charges for MWR communities is fourteen hundred and twenty-nine dollars per their survey. Everett's two thousand and fourteen average water and sewer charges, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So as community, we're about thirty percent lower than the average community, with a ninth lowest rate of the sixty communities included in the survey. So that's, that's a good thing, but it's pay-for-agent infrastructure, the rates have to go up. So the, the last slide is talking about the enterprise fund was submitted to the City Services Commission for their review, and they approved the recommended budget for submission to the city council. In order to fully cover all the direct and indirect costs, NWR assessments, debt service, and adequate staffing for the enterprise fund. City Services Commission has voted a seven-and-a-half percent rate increase across the board for fiscal year sixteen. And that's the short presentation I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions with regard to the budget.
Before we go to the questions, let me ask you, would you be more comfortable sitting over there because you're gonna have books?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, why don't we do that?
Thank you.
And Counselor Hanlon, you'll be first. The clerk just advised me, Counselors, that the clipped paperwork that you have, these are updates and changes to go into the book. Counselor Hanlon.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Viskey. On, on page three, oh, on frame three, whatever you want to call it. Yes. Okay, the last one, the goal is to have a user fee, one hundred percent of both direct and indirect costs. How far along are we with that, as a percentage?
Well, the enterprise fund had three full years of operation. The first year, you were negative one point three million dollars. Deficit, so essentially one point three million of the cost of running water and sewer subsidized by a general fund. The second year, it was one point seven million dollar deficit, so one point seven million dollars of general fund money went to support water and sewer. This last year, fiscal year fourteen that went by, we had a surplus of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, that's the retained earnings that certified by Department of Revenue. So fiscal year fourteen was the first year we were actually able to cover all direct and indirect costs of the enterprise fund with the rates that we charged.
So we're at a hundred percent then, for this, for this year, for fourteen?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're in the operational portion of fifteen right now, so we're eight months through right now, and we look like we should, we cover it, you know, it's... Water's a funny thing because of wet springs and dry springs and how many pools and how many lawns, but right now, through eight months, we're, we're, we're on track with our revenue estimates, where.
So it sounds like we're going in the right direction. Is this a prediction for the future, that that's the way it'll go?
That's my hope, I mean, again, seven-and-a-half percent rate increase, it's not great news that we like to bring forward, but we don't want to go in deficit surplus, deficit surplus. I mean, the nice thing about our enterprise fund is that any extra revenues that are collected stay within the fund. So the two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars is a result of revenues exceeding what we budgeted and us turning back some of the expenditure line now. You know, two hundred and fifty thousand on fifteen and a half million dollars is in a, is in a huge spread, so we want to keep the, the momentum going. I want to keep it self-supporting, and my hope is that there's not seven-and-a-half percent rate increases that are necessary each and every year. But we do have some debt service payments coming up, and we have some increases in the assessments on water and sewer. So, and fortunately, we're not at the top end of the, the rates of the surrounding community. So although it's not great news, it's, it's kind of what needs to be done in order for us to stay fully self-supporting. Otherwise, we're gonna be going back to the general fund to subsidize this operation.
I see, we got a lot, as a matter of fact, that's my next question. On page four says, "The majority of the infrastructure in the city has exceeded its useful life." And I was, I know we're doing a lot of repairs all the time, like, what, what percentage of that infrastructure do you think needs to be replaced or repaired?
I don't have a great answer for that right now. I do know that we are doing a total citywide assessment of our sewer and stormwater infrastructure right now. I believe there's definitely some data on, on the amount of water pipes that we've replaced in the city. I could probably get that information from MWRA, they actually, they allow a ratio on your, on the LWSAP program. It's designated for water main replacement primarily, but if they give you a ratio, if you've replaced fifty percent of your water lines, they allow you to spend fifty percent of that money on other things like water meters and other infrastructure. So I think about half of the water lines have been replaced recently, and about half of them are beyond their useful life, but I wouldn't want to... I wouldn't want you to hold me to that without me doing some data checking.
You're including sewage in this too?
Yeah, every, water, sewer, stormwater, it's all.
Sewer is pretty old in the whole city.
It is, it is, and, you know, unfortunately, with sewage is, we don't know when there's a problem until there's a problem. So we're a little bit reactive on sewer issues, but with this study, we're hoping to get a little more proactive and, and start to have some, some areas of infrastructure repair. But we have to do, we have a half million dollar, last year, you approved a half million dollar loan from the Clean Waters Trust, and that half million dollars is doing a comprehensive citywide study of all the sewer and stormwater. And that's gonna probably drive a lot of the, the capital improvement programs going forward.
Okay, the other question on the same page is the illicit discharge and detection of elimination of the water sewage. And I want to ask, you know, who, who asks for their services? Does MWRA come out and just perform this? Are we, are we doing it ourselves?
No, I mean, anytime there's sewage detected in stormwater, we, you know, we get put on notice by the environmental people. So, you know, there's two issues with storm and store water, there's the stormwater that goes into the sewer lines, and MWRA has programs for that because they're essentially treating the sewage. So they want to take as much stormwater out of the sewer lines. But when the sewer is going into the stormwater, they don't really have programs for that because that's not going into their treatment plan. So that's the IDE, that's the Clean Waters Trust that allows us money for that.
Okay, and do you know, like, what percentage that is, and the reason I'm asking that is because that, you know, years ago, I had thought that we had eliminate, eliminated all water discharge into the sewage, uh, stormwater into the sewage system. Evidently, we haven't.
I can tell you for sure that we haven't eliminated all of it. I think that we know of four cases right now that need repairing, and that's part of hopefully an appropriation from retained earnings. We can go and address those for, for that we know of. But again, the, the comprehensive study's gonna probably give us a little more information, good, good or bad, we're gonna get it.
Okay, and on page five, we're talking about the Sewer Enterprise Fund is, the capital budget is three million one hundred sixty-three thousand, and then we list a whole bunch of them. Now, I wanted to know if this amount of money is in the budget figure, or is this other, other figure?
No, this is, this is what's proposed for fiscal year sixteen now, if I go through the bullets. The five hundred thousand water main replacement, that bond authorization was for four point six million, that was approved a couple of years back. So you don't need a bond authorization for that, but the MWRA only allows you to draw down a half a million a year, so there's that half million allotment here. So there's really no action needed by the council, so to speak, on, on this particular, because you've already authorized the bond. The two million eighty-eight thousand for INI, that is money that's available, but it's, it's still subject to a bond authorization. So what I'm hoping is that for the next council meeting, assuming that this enterprise fund budget gets approved as presented, I'll bring forward a bond order for the two hundred, two million eighty-eight thousand for the INI projects. I'll bring forward two orders for storm and sewer water, uh, stormwater improvements, and I'll bring a bond order forward for the departmental vehicles that are requested.
Would it be possible to see a, a listing of all the bonds that we have, and what was the initial charge, and the schedule of payment?
Tab eight has your pro forma debt schedule of all the debt. So you have it in here. And what you have is you have on top the actual debt, and then on, on below it is the, is the pro forma debt schedules for the new programs. So everything on that tab eight is all the debt service for water and sewer and stormwater in the city.
Do I have one last question?
Sure.
That's on the last page, a seven point five percent increase. You said that increases across the board, and is that, is that for all water uses?
Yes.
Low or high, two hundred gallons or two million gallons?
Well, there, there's five tiers of it, and I believe that's on, let me get the tab here. It is your third tab on your book. It has your monthly rates and your quarterly rates for, and then it has the usage, it's five tiers. And you can see how the tiers are broken out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor McKinnon.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Viskey. How many people are currently working down there?
Right now, I believe we have twelve point eight full-time equivalents.
Are we gonna be looking into adding any additional people down there?
Yes.
How many, how many additional people?
The proposed budget has fifteen employees, so I guess two point one four positions. One of them is Assistant Water Superintendent, which would be a water operator. We need to have a licensed water operator per the state. So that position is, right now, we're seeking someone to fill that position. And the other position that's in there right now is the Stormwater Coordinator. That position exists right now, it's in the general fund. We feel it's better represented in the enterprise fund, so that, that, that position is shown as a, as a new position here, but it exists. We're just bringing it over to the, to the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund as opposed to the general fund.
Is, is there anyone in-house that actually could be licensed to do that?
I believe they could be licensed, but I, I don't know what the process is. Ernie and Jerry are here, if you had questions in that specific.
We have, Mr. Laverde before us, please. Second? Second, we have Mr. Laverde before us. Ernie, if you please come up, thank you.
How are you tonight?
Good, thank you, sir. I'm in Riviera Water Superintendent.
Um, the question would be, is there anyone that could be possibly licensed in-house rather than like seeking someone out or, uh, to create a new job, or?
No, I have sent a couple of people to, to get their license, but we need a, we need a, an operator with a full license. You don't get a full license, you get a, you get a, an, a training, a training license if, if you pass the test. And it takes years to get to, for it to turn full. So right now, we're under an admin order because we, we're lacking in that. And we're allowed so much time to get an operator with a full license.
Is that by state law? Okay, so you have a certain amount of time to get this operator in that's properly licensed? And could we be working on other individuals to have licensing in this field as well?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing is, the other position that you mentioned, Mr. Viskey?
Stormwater coordinator?
Yeah, do we have someone that could be?
We have someone doing it now.
Someone that's already doing, that they're already licensed?
Peter Macina's doing it right now. He, like I said, this is just putting, putting the position where it belongs, if, you know, we have, we have him in the general fund right now, but...
Was that, I, I looked at the book earlier today, and it was a jump from a five, unit five, to a unit seven, is that what that is, or?
No, it's the, the...
Is that another position being added?
Yeah, I mean, right, we have W five positions, they're technically, if you look at the job descriptions, they're water meter readers. We don't have water meters to read anymore. So we cut one water meter reader out, the other water meter reader is still an active position. That particular individual is out on workers' comp, but I imagine that once that plays out, most of our employees will be craftsmen, heavy machine operators, they're not... The, the function of a meter reader is kind of an obsolete thing right now.
Will that be unit, well, will it go up to a W seven?
A W seven would be the minimum, minimum grade of, of water department, yes.
Okay. Let me see. So there's only two, maybe three additional jobs that you're looking for down there to create?
Well, there's, the, the two jobs, one of them exists, again, that's kind of a, you know, it's kind of a plus one on this side and a minus one on the other side. When you see the operating budget, the Assistant Water Superintendent is...
Are we gonna be filling his position behind him?
No, we, we zeroed it out. The mayor recommended zeroing it out, so that, but we knew that, we also had a higher water, Assistant Water Superintendent, and we knew the Stormwater Coordinator was coming over, so, so we cut one of the W five positions to try to hedge that. And then the other small portion of the full-time equivalent is, one of our clerks was working thirty hours a week. And it's because we did so much water meter replacement, it just required that we have her thirty-five hours a week. So right now, she's, she's working thirty-five hours a week, and we, and we plan to keep that for sixteen.
Okay. On page four, it says about bonding, what rates are we currently paying right now? Could you just?
What's a, a bond rating?
Bond rating.
A bond rate is a double A.
It's a double A, okay, and when we go out to bond, what are we paying on each bond that we do, percentage-wise?
Last time we went out, we, we paid a little, little more, two percent. I mean, I bought, the, the rates of borrowing money are pretty advantageous right now, so it's, it is a good time to do somebody's fraud.
It's not a fluctuating rate, correct?
Well, they're...
It's a fixed rate or a fluctuating rate, like an adjustable?
Well, the bonds are sold on, on the open market, so we take the lowest bidder on the bonds, and they might set up a coupon rate of three percent and pay a premium, it's how they design it. But we get the net overall rate once the, once the sale's done.
So it's two percent right now?
I think it was a little over two percent last time, but you gotta remember now, sometimes in our bond sales, we'll have five-year bonds, ten-year bonds, twenty-year bonds, thirty-year bonds. So all of them hedged together came out to an aggregate of about two point three percent when we sold them last time. If we have more short-term bonds, the rate will probably be lower, and if, if they're more twenty or thirty-year, that rate may go up. And it's all subject to market conditions and such, but still a very favorable market to be, to bond in right now. And as a matter of fact, I'm, you know, with the, last time we went to bond, we didn't have the award for the casino license, and a lot of that stuff is gonna hopefully favor us with bond rating and with the salaries. It's actually, we actually have people actively calling, wanting to know when we're going out and selling bonds, so it's a, that's good news for the community.
Now, if we have free, like, if there's an overflow of free cash there in the fund, or an excess amount?
In, in the retainer.
In, in your fund?
Yeah.
Would you utilize some of that cash to actually, actually offset these bonds, or you don't feel that's feasible at this time?
I mean, we not offset the bonds, but, you know, you can certainly use it to fund future projects. I mean, we, we have two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars available now. Was hesitant to go and spend it too early on because things can happen, we can have major water breaks. But as we get close to the end of the fiscal year, I'd like to use two hundred thousand dollars of that to fund an appropriation for sewer infrastructure projects and, and stormwater. So if we do detect something going on, or if something comes up in an emergency, the funding is available, we can have it. So that, you know, those appropriations are being recommended to kind of just, you know, keep up with the infrastructure and, you know, some of these problems, they happen in a, in a minute's notice, so.
Uh, let me see here. What, what type of improvements have been done throughout the city? You, you mentioned that we had a, you know, a, like, deficient, like, pipes and deficient water structures.
We did, um, we did phase one of a water ma, I mean, in my time, the last couple of years, we did one phase of water main replacement. It was a one and a half million dollar project, and we, in the particular street...
All the brand-new monitors?
Brand-new pipes, a lot of times you, you line the pipes, so they're brand-new pipes, but yeah, now, we have another one and a half million dollar contract currently going on right now, so once the snow clears, we'll start that second phase, and then...
And what's, what's going on with that phase?
Nothing, it's, it's in holding right now until the winter, until the thaw comes, and then there's a bunch of streets that are on that, Ernie could probably give you the specific streets, but...
Will that be all new piping?
Yes.
New water piping, new sewer piping?
Just water, that's just water. Yeah, the different programs are for different, that, that program is a water in the...
Is that coming through a grant of any sort?
It's coming through a zero interest loan from the MWRA.
So it'll be a zero interest, okay. So you're going after loans, bonding, and grants, correct?
Yeah, we go after it all.
Everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Free, I like free.
Free stuff is good. So that, that'll be the new, the project would be to put in new piping for the water?
Yeah, they, the program allows us a half million dollars a year for that, so we've used two million dollars. And now, if you look at the, the spreadsheet, you'll see it's half a million sixteen, half a million seventeen, half a million eighteen. Sometimes we wait two years and try to package it up and do a million-dollar project. So the first project was two years of money, the second project was two years of money. But now, we're in the fifth year, and I, I'd like to, I'd like to put it to use, I mean, the, like, again, it's a good time to sell bonds, and if we got monies available, we might as well do the projects.
Now, are these streets already designated?
The phase two one has been bid out, and all those streets are designated, the, this new money would be a whole, you know, you'd have to put it out to bid it and, and pick the streets. So the, the new money that's being proposed hasn't been designated, but the stuff in process is, 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 the money's been designated, and the streets have been designated.
Okay, and then I think I have one more. Now, this, the seven point five across the board, just explain that, what are you gonna do with that?
Well, if you go to the tab four, uh, was it tab three, I'm sorry, you got your, your monthly rates...
Just for the people at home that don't have the tabs and stuff?
Sorry, so I'll get the stuff online too, for everybody to look at. But, um, just for, just, just to have a talking point, on the, on the quarterly rates, which are basically residential properties, you know, your usage would be two dollars and eight cents for water and five dollars and sixty-eight cents for sewer. And that would go up by seven-and-a-half percent to two point two four and six dollars and eleven cents. And then you have five different tiers, and those tiers would, those tiers would all go up seven-and-a-half percent. So basically, across the board, from the lowest rate to the highest rate.
So the...
We didn't raise one tier more than another tier, we just...
So you're trying to just keep everything the same right across the board?
Trying to, you know, the, the rate increases are nothing that we take lightly, or we, we love doing, but I don't want to come back before you with a million-and-a-half dollar deficit in the next year's enterprise fund, so...
Would that happen if we didn't raise it?
I would say that the likelihood is more it would happen, yeah, because, you know, the budget's going up, the debt service going up, the MWR assessments are going up, we have a couple of new positions. So, yeah, my hope is that we always end in a positive. I mean, if, if we have two million dollars of retained earnings next year, then I'll know that we charge too much money for water, and then you can always offset... always offset it. Or you can use retained earnings to actually adjust rates as well, but um again, two hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars surplus on a on a sixteen million dollar budget, that's that's not a huge percentage, so we're you know, I we're not out of the woods yet. You know, we were one point seven in the deficit the year before, so you could see how it could swing with one bad year. So my goal is just to make sure we're full cost recovery and then if there are excess dollars that are that are collected, those dollars all go back to the water and sewer department anyway, so it's not, we can't take that money and do anything else with it, so it's all stays within in the enterprise fund.
Okay. Now, with the city services commission has voted and raised the rates, um that's just a recommendation to us, correct?
No.
Or is that a flat rate? That's the.
Their their uh their role is to set water and sewer rates as.
I just want I wanted to hear you say that. So.
Okay, I said it.
All right, you did. So, all right, they set the rate.
They set the rate.
And basically, they put it before us and we vote on it, correct?
Well, you vote on the budget. You they don't appropriate money. You this board appropriates all the dollars that are spent, so um they set the rate and hopefully the appropriation goes through, and my hope is that all the rates and the water fees cover the expenses and I'm not here before you with a deficit.
So this is what you're basically anticipating the seven point five, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And it's already been approved by them, so.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilor Paltano. Thank you. All right, now you mentioned that the debt services is going up. Uh we refer to the uh you know, the fifteen million nine twenty-five. I realize that debt service is only a harsh portion of that. Now, looking at the uh in the book, is that the self-supporting debt services?
I'm sorry, which tab are you on, council?
I'm on the last tab, pro-formular debt schedule.
The colorful sheet?
Yes.
That's all the debt service that um is attributable to the water and sewer um enterprise fund.
So for this for this amount here that we're looking at on page three of your presentation?
Mm-hmm.
In regard just to the portion regarding debt service, are we looking at uh are we looking at eleven, one million one hundred and fifty-five? Or are we looking at one million three hundred and three? That's what I'm because I realize that we're going, we're talking fiscal year fifty, two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen. I just want to be clear on which column we're looking at here.
Yeah, one um one million two nineteen oh oh three retirement of debt principal.
Where is that on this sheet? I'm just trying to find it.
Oh, the so I'm looking at the budget summary sheet. This is a detail and then the the summaries are on the as part of the budget.
So can I have that figure again? What is the uh the debt the debt services for this budget?
Total debt service, one million two nineteen, three dollars.
And we're anticipating borrowing an additional twenty-five thousand for the next two years each? Am I reading that correctly?
Um, hold on a second.
No, I take that.
No, that's like that. Those are those are um those are um interest-only payments on that. And then as the debt comes on, it would move up to the top portion, so that's the projected part.
So we're projecting though borrowing fifty thousand principal in two thousand seventeen?
Well, that that would be the portion of um the ten the ten-year loan, five hundred thousand dollars. It's ten-year interest-free, so we'd have first interest payment of fifty thousand in seventeen, and if we borrow another five hundred thousand, it would be the second payment of the sixteen and the first payment of the seventeen, so it would be the hundred thousand. And then another five hundred thousand would bring it up to the one one hundred and fifty thousand. So I'm just trying to project out what it would look like as it as it goes along.
Okay. All right, but this continues to keep an average. Looks to be based on these figures, we keep maintaining an average roughly about one point two million?
Yeah, again, things could come up. When we do the study, we could have some serious um sewer and and stormwater issues and um you know, how depending on how much those cost and what the affordability of it is and, you know, we're gonna try to prioritize them, but yeah, we'd like to get to keep debt service as a reasonable ratio to the total operating budget for sure.
Well, I'm I'm always I'm always toward leaning toward the side of caution.
Mm-hmm.
Plan for the worst, and then everything else is gravy if you don't, if it doesn't get that bad.
Right.
But if it doesn't get this like this, is there money coming back to the taxpayer?
Um.
Or are we just gonna find something else to spend it on?
With regard to debt service?
Well, yeah, if we if these numbers come out less.
Yeah, I mean, if if anything that's not expended in an appropriation gets turned back to uh retained earnings anyway, and those are certified, so those would stay within in in the enterprise fund, so um and then those dollars are repurposed usually through appropriation of the body for uh capital program or something or, you know, again, if it was if there was a real big chunk of money in there, you could go to stabilize the rates as well. I think that's a little dangerous, but I mean certainly warranted if if we had a great year and you had a million and a half of retained earnings and we can stabilize rates, then that's certainly something that I would have the mayor consider as part of the the budget proposal, but I think um I think the city is is really um yeah, really needs to, you know, take a good hard look at all the infrastructure and try to keep up with the uh the costs of making those improvements. And if we can generate retained earnings to help them do that, then I think the money goes back to the rate payers in in that respect.
Okay. Uh next question I have is regarding the departmental vehicles. Uh I see that there's in the presentation, there's a line for purchasing three through bonding.
Yes.
How many departmental vehicles does the department currently have?
Three.
And what what type of vehicles are they?
We have three uh service utility trucks and one vector, uh vector jet rod truck.
Is that the cleaning out the the sewers and?
You can you can yeah, cleans out the blockages of the line with the jet and then also um I'll go back with it.
Now, these three additional vehicles, what type of vehicles are we looking at picking up?
I'm looking at a something similar to um a bread truck with um with everything in it. It's an emergency vehicle with a built-in compressor, built-in generator. Everything is self-contained in this in this vehicle to go to an emergency. The second truck, which is uh maintenance, because I like that, I wanna implement a valve maintenance. And what that truck has is a has a little vet uh little va- little vac on it, cleans out the water boxes. It has a gate turner on it, and it turns the gates and it keeps track of the clouds of the gates, um gates that are frozen. And it it's like a smart, it it works it works the um the 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 valve.
Just just for the public, they're water gates, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's what controls how we.
Yes.
Acts the water through. Okay.
Yeah, and and from there, it tells me if it's broken and I and then I have the other the my operations can go repair, replace that. But that's an that would be a that's a yearly um operation doing the maintenance program. Like the city of Boston, it takes five years to do one complete round, so that would be a full-time position, two guys. And that also, also with that vehicle, um I can have it, I can have everything downloaded to like an iPad, and if I had a water break, it it would tell me what valves need to be shut, or it'll say this valve is broken, you have to go here and here to shut to make to get that just put the address in, and it'll tell me what has to be closed.
So that speeds the turnaround time.
That's the turnaround time.
Minimum, you know, to secure the problem so you can work on.
And going to a farther, eventually you can also um it will also do a robo-call of the street that's um with a brake or herd can notify the people in that area who will be affected with the shock.
And the third vehicle?
Third vehicle, the dump truck. I don't have a dump truck. I depend on highway department. I need a dump truck twenty-four hours, seven days a week, because I don't know what can happen. Um I I I change hydrants every day. I'm I always need a truck. And if the truck is plowing and I have a water break, I gotta wait for a truck to come in, drop the plow, hopefully doesn't have a sander on it, so I I one of the problem is really in need of a dump truck.
And is this replacing, are these three vehicles replacing any existing vehicles?
The vac truck, I'm I'm keeping the uh the the truck with the with the um gate turner is not replacing that um in the vehicle. The uh dump truck is not, I don't have a dump truck.
No, I meant the the three existing vehicles you mentioned that you have right now. You said three utility trucks? Are any of them being replaced by these two vehicles?
No, no. I I I'm short on vehicles, because I have a meter guy that goes around every day with with um he has a vehicle. I have a vehicle and the other vehicle is it's old, it's um almost ten years old. It carries all the tools in it. It's a really disaster, but I would like to have to keep that truck to go run pots for me when the other, because if I'm on the job and it it pulls a compressor, I don't wanna have to send that truck to go get pots, whatever. It needs to be on the job.
Sure.
All at all times. All the tools are on that job. You know, the truck goes away, go gets this, the other guys are working the whole, I need this pot, I need that, he doesn't, the truck's gone. So it I don't, I'm gonna try to get away from it.
And just the last question I have regarding the vehicles. Are any of these vehicles go home at the end of the day, or do they stay, all these stays on city property?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Councilor Dela Solo.
How are we doing?
Uh I got a few questions here. Um Dr. Ritchie, on the seven point five increase, does that affect the taxpayers much at all? I wouldn't think it's just a over a million dollars increase.
I would say, when you look at the water and sewer rate survey from um the MWR, they base it on ninety thousand gallons of water being used, and that's where you get that fourteen hundred and thirty-seven dollar average bill. City of average, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. If you think of that, seven and a half percent increase would probably be around seventy bucks. Now, I don't think we use ninety thousand gallons in the city. We don't have as many lawns and waterings and such, so I would say that more than likely, it's probably, you know, in the forty, fifty dollar range. But I just use their data and their statistics because they they put it all together and do a comprehensive report, but I mean, seven and a half percent of of a thousand is seventy-five dollars, but I think that you'd see the typical water user and it might might use less than ninety thousand gallons a year, so it'll be it'll be a little bit of an increase.
You don't know the water and sewer bills are out of control for for every city.
Yeah, I mean, we we've actually done a pretty good job keeping water rates low. Again, I put the water uh and sewer rate survey in the book for you to look at it, so um they may seem like they're out of control here, but there's other cities that they're really out of control, but not that that matters to anybody. I mean, average rates, average rates, but it would certainly be a tougher pill to swallow if we were the third highest community in the MWR and were proposing rate increases, but
Correct.
Um, we're trying to um again, just make this a full-cost recovery um operation and unfortunately, as uh assessments go up, debt service goes up. Um you know, without a subsidy from the general fund, the rates would have to go up as well, so um but we um we feel now that with all the new water meters in, everyone's paying exactly what they should be paying, so I mean, abatements are way down. I mean, we get readings every day. We can call up people if we think there's water on our floor in the morning and say, hey, you know, you got reusage in the middle of the night, check and see if you got a leak, so um we're doing all we could to make sure that at least everybody's paying for their fair share of water and there's no um estimated bills and all that stuff, so. But yeah, the rates the rates will definitely, when they go up, people's water bills may go up, and then there's also a countereffect. You raise someone's rates, then there's the tendency to use less water, so if I thought I needed four percent increase, I might not say four percent, because that might only be two and a half percent of people's that taking shorter showers. So, you know, you try to come up with the most reasonable amount to as a rate increase and you know, definitely take into account the 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 people and, you know, taxes and bill, water bills, rates, I mean, no one likes doing this, trust me.
Another question, uh we we have eleven men. Am I am I wrong? Am I correct on the water department?
Eleven men.
Twelve.
Yeah, and I have two that are on work.
So you have eleven guys as of right now with with just three vehicles?
And I and I borrow.
You borrow the dump truck, right.
From the neighbor.
All right. Uh I like the idea with uh the vehicles itself personally, but especially checking the water valves out, because you know yourself, I mean, I'm kind of in that industry itself, and uh eliminate, you can isolate a lot quicker. I mean, with the water main brick on the Woodland Street not too long ago, we had trouble finding the valve. So if we had something like that, we could look at the valve, shut it off. At least we know where the valves are.
That truck also has a compressor on it, jackhammer. So any buried boxes? That truck.
Correct.
That truck will do it.
You go all year looking, besides other work, but look, just looking for the valves exposed and cleaning it out.
Yeah.
In case we do have an emergency. Uh well, a couple more questions. The winter, how was it with the water breaks with the frost?
I had a I we had a few water breaks this winter. We had a lot of services that were frozen this this past winter. More than, oh, probably twenty, thirty residents that I we had a I thought I bought a thoring machine.
Yeah.
And I I thought to give them to give them water.
Do we do we repair it ourselves, or do we have a contractor?
Oh, I I we did it.
In-house?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect. Um I think that was it. That was it. Thank you.
Councilor Sani.
Thank you. Under um personal services under the salaries. I'm trying to understand um is four, three or four of them have the same salary, nothing going up. Did they get any raises or increases, or? I know they jumped from a W five to a W seven, but I don't know if there was a salary jump from that or anything like that.
No, we're in collective bargaining right now, so um anyone who's at the top step has um has their salary just budgeted as such, so if you see any increases, it's usually someone going from a step two to a step three or a step one to a step two, but anyone who's at the top step, um we're not we're not building in raises. I mean, we'll come for funding on raises once collective bargaining has been uh complete, so.
And when we go for the raises, we're gonna be taking that money elsewhere to fund those raises?
Uh yeah, well, the, you know, water and sewer enterprise fund um is funds itself. We do have uh four hundred thousand dollars in the in the general fund. I probably won't take that money to fund this, but I would either, I mean, my hope would be that we can fund it internally without coming to you. Sometimes if you have someone on workers comp, you get a little bit of a, you know, ability to shift some money around.
Why did one of?
I never wanna come to you guys for more money, trust me.
Yeah, we don't. One of the craftsmen's went down from forty-six to forty-four. Why is that? I know I can tell that he did he's a different step, but in fifteen, he was forty-six, and then it went to forty-four in sixteen. One of the craftsmen, W seven. Slash two, it says.
Hmm. It's just a, oh, go ahead.
He was a new hire.
Okay.
So he's hired for the step.
Yeah.
Step one.
All right, so he's yeah, so he's a new hire, so when we originally budgeted, that position might have been a step four, but when a new hire comes in, they go to a step one, so that'd be a step two.
So you may have been offered at forty-six, but we only given him a forty.
No, not so much as offered. If uh if uh gentleman A was working as a step four and he leaves service and then we backfill and we hired a step one.
Right.
It'll give the appearance we're cutting the, you know, we're lowering their salary, but we're just, you know, you you the appropriation from fifteen is the appropriation, so if we had budgeted that amount in fifteen for that position and someone left midway, now in sixteen, we're gonna budget the right amount.
The senior count clerk, did she take on more hours?
Yes.
She didn't, okay. And the senior count clerk, it looks like you didn't, you have fifteen eight in there, but it doesn't have a position there.
We don't count um non-benefit people as full-time equivalents. When we do full-time equivalents in the budget, a full-time equivalent is anyone who's benefit-eligible, so there's any part-time as we have under twenty hours, I don't count them as an FTE, because um it's just not the practice to do so. It's the FTE counts basically usually for um anyone who gets health insurance and pension benefits.
And basically, I mean, is the average um rate increase for salaries like three percent and then maybe two percent with um cost of living? Is that the average?
Hmm, well, I don't know what the average is. Um collective bargaining is subject to whatever you negotiate, so I'm not gonna tell everyone where where we are with that, but uh that's a negotiation that's active. The assistant water superintendent salary is um is what we posted the job at, and I think that's what we'll be able to fill that position at. Water superintendent salary reflects the salary. Water superintendent salary reflects the salary survey, uh, salary study that was done, uh, this year. And that, we were, we were going to come before you with the salary survey, um, during the year here. But we've decided that all of the salary survey recommendations will come as part of the budget presentation. So that, no reason to do it mid-year and then, and then you got another budget. So we're gonna, all the salaries that are part of the proposed operating budget are gonna reflect what, what came up about a salary survey. This one you just happen to see now because you're getting it early.
The other thing, you said assistant water superintendent is mandatory. How come we didn't have it in last year?
Um, I think we thought that we were covered under the licenses that we carried, but we found out otherwise.
Thank you.
We were actually contracting that out as well and they said that we're not allowed to use a contractor to fulfill that role. So we thought we were covered, but we were, uh, we weren't.
And we could, can we be fined if we didn't have someone in that position?
I believe we could and that's what we're trying to avoid.
Okay, that's all we do. Thank you.
Counselor Sichara.
On that, uh, seven and a half percent increase, could you give me a rough idea of how much of that is the water enterprise increase? And how much of that is the increase on our budget? In other words, is it five percent water rate due to the water resource authority and two percent to our budget increase? Could you give me that?
Um, I can give, in, in round figures, it's, it's probably about, uh, three percent for the assessments. Probably another two percent for the, for the debt service. And then again, there's a, a little bit of a factor in there so that if people use less water, we don't come up with a shortage. So it's, um, it's not a, it's not a hard and fast, rough calculation that I have. But just looking at the overall budget from last year to this year, and, I mean, I can do a little work and try to portion out a little better. But I'm, just to give, just to try to answer your question, it's.
Roughly three percent is due to the water resource.
Yeah, exactly, about that. And then the debt service, um, it kind of catches up to you. You approve projects, it's great, you're doing stuff. But then, you know, a year or two later, all those debt service payments become, uh, become a reality.
Getting back to the rates, you have the step one, two, three, four, and five. As I read this, the more you use, the higher the rate. Is that correct?
That's correct.
In other words, if you're a manufacturer of car wash and you use the over two hundred and forty cubic feet, you're paying fourteen dollars eighty-two cents, whereas a homeowner's only paying seven sixty pounds. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. The other thing is, one more thing, on the, um, in the budget, you have fifty thousand dollars for meter maintenance. Well, we have all new meters. What could possibly go wrong with a new meter?
I'm gonna let Ernie answer that one.
That money is for, um, I want to use that money for doing testing of, uh, large meters. According to the, um, American Waterworks Association, you should touch, you should, um, test four inch meters and above yearly. And we have, we have numerous places with twelve inch meters, ten inch meters, and, um, that money would be to.
Test to make sure that they're metering properly?
Well, yeah, we believe it's money well spent. Again, um, a twelve inch meter is about this big, so if you get any slippage out of that, it, it, it could very well, um, be, um, a, a big negative to the, to the enterprise fund. So, um, it's actually, um.
Yeah, we have large meters down at the island end.
Ernie came up with the idea after we replaced eight, over eight thousand meters in the city, we put out a bid to have some meter testing done so that we can, uh, replace and, and fix any of the, especially the four, eight, twelve inch water meters. It's, um, we think it's a, it's a good, it's a good hedge.
Alright. The last question is, the roughly nine hundred and ninety-seven dollar average cost for homeowners. That is just for homeowners. Does that include what the, uh, big water users use? In other words, you got that average. Are you averaging homeowners and business to get that thing in?
They use ninety thousand gallons of water a year as a, as a baseline. So I'll be honest, I can't tell you how much ninety thousand dollars is for an average two-person household or four-person household. But that's the, uh, standard that the MWRA uses in their rate survey. I'm, I'm imagining it's a typical household, but again, I think you'd see the city of Everett people probably use a little less because I think there's a little less of the outdoor water and activities due to the size of the lots and, and the, you know, not a lot of lawns and green space. But, um, I use what they give us in the, in the survey, so ninety thousand gallons is, is what that's based upon.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President, for you, these gentlemen here. Everybody seems to be getting around the same, uh, you know, um, stuff they want to talk about. Mine's sort of the same way. I don't know, it's probably all related. But, um, what I'm trying to get at is the nine hundred and ninety-eight we're paying now per, uh, household, right? Now, why did the city service commission vote a seven point five increase across the board? I mean, what was that? That's, that's not water and sewer, but what else does that include?
That's all it includes. That's all it includes. It's just the, just seven and a half percent increase on the rates that are charged for water and sewer.
But then where do you get here? The salaries are eight hundred and eighty-five thousand.
That's not, well, that's.
Where's that come from?
It's, comes from, uh, appropriation from the city council.
And, uh.
The rates, the, the rate recommendation was designed to cover the costs of the requested appropriations.
Okay, so you, you're saying eighty thousand dollars more, it might be with the seven point five percent. So you're talking almost, uh, four, almost talking to the rate of what everybody else has. The hun, you add ninety to, uh, I mean, eighty-two, uh, thousand, you get a hundred, I mean, four, eighteen hundred, would you? So it's.
I mean, I, I.
To say what, you're with the lowest, lowest community out of sixty communities, communities, uh, that were surveyed. But you add the, uh, seven point seven to nine, take a thousand dollars, and you say, how much is that per household?
I'm estimating it'll be probably around fifty to seventy dollars depending on.
Alright, so what, that would put, what would that put the, uh, the increase total with that seven point five? How much exactly is it? I'm not too good at adding.
Um, well, I wouldn't want to stand there and give you an exact figure.
Just a round figure.
So, well, I'll, I'll, I'll try to put it a different way. Last year's budget was fifteen point eight million dollars. This year's budget's sixteen point five million dollars. So that should represent around six hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
I'm saying with this eight hundred dollar increase, we'd first write back and with everybody else.
No.
The other communities. The other communities, the average is, uh, fourteen hundred. You could give us the thousand plus eight, eighty dollars. That makes, uh, uh, thousand eight hundred, I don't know. So it seems to me it's small.
I mean, it's seven and a half percent of nine ninety-eight, so, um, if that brings it to a thousand seventy dollars, you're still lower. And again, I mean.
I mean, I don't think once we get that raised, we're not gonna be the nineteenth lowest, ninth lowest in.
Well, I don't know what the other fifty-nine communities are doing with their rates either. I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not assuming all fifty-nine are gonna be, uh, level funded. So, I mean, I can only tell you next year when I get the survey and, and come back before you again. I, I, I can't really tell you.
I mean, it seems like some of this stuff is, looks okay, but if you look into it, it's about the same. Anyway, now let's go back to the salaries. How much is that, what is the increase of the, uh, of the salaries this year? The average, is the average percentage of the salary?
Well.
Is it over seven percent, point five?
Uh, if you give me a second, I'll do the math for you.
I mean, you got fifteen people with almost, uh, eight hundred and eighty-six, uh, thousand dollars. Seems like a lot of money.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's, if you're looking at strictly salaries, it's twenty-one and a half percent increase. But again, you have, um, you have one new position that's brand new. You have one position that is actually funded in, in the general fund this year. That's, we're just putting in the, uh, enterprise fund, so. But eight eighty-five versus seven twenty-nine, yeah, that percentage is larger than seven and a half percent, obviously. But your big numbers only go up three percent like your assessments, which are both fourteen million dollars, you know?
They're saying.
It's an aggregate.
Average salaries over twenty-one percent for everybody?
No, it's not a percentage increase of, that's just the, that's the cumulative total from what we had last year, total salaries.
Well, what's the increase rate on the, you have, everybody's getting a raise, what percentage are they getting?
Well, again, we're in collective bargaining now, so I'm not at, I'm not at the liberty to explain to you guys what the rate increase. And, and those aren't even, those aren't even reflected in here anyhow.
I mean, you said twenty-one percent. I don't.
Well, that's because of extra bodies, not extra, that's not salary raises for an individual. That's because you had twelve point eight six FTEs and now you have fifteen FTEs. So you have two point one four additional salaries in this budget.
I want to say that the Everett, uh, commission did a good job for you guys, I think. I would commend them, but I think that's way too high. Um, but anyway, let's go back now. Uh, the total expenses is seven hundred and, uh, sixty-seven thousand dollars. How much was that increase from us here?
Hundred and sixty thousand.
Well, I got it here. I got the, uh, expenses under the salaries on this piece of paper here. There's seven hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred on expenses.
Yeah, you asked how much it was up from the previous year. That's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars more than the previous year.
And that's for fixing all the broken pipes and all those?
Well, no, it's really, uh, fif, twenty-five thousand dollars is due to the maintenance, uh, program you just spoke of. And then a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars is stormwater expenses that we built into the budget to go along with the stormwater coordinator. So everything's been level funded from an expense side other than the fact that we have money appropriated now for stormwater expenses. Right now, right now, we have stormwater issues, but we have no line item to pay for them. So we're trying to actually build up the, you know, we always come forward with you with a twelve-month budget. My goal is always to come before you with a twelve-month budget. I don't, I don't want to come with a short budget and then come back. So that's, everything's level funded except we put money in for stormwater expenses that we never had before.
Okay, um, maybe one more or two. Uh, you say where the, uh, the interest rates is, it's, uh, zero percent. But the long term, it's, uh, two hundred and ten, two hundred and ten thousand and the short term is fifty thousand.
Yeah, not, not, not all of the, not all of the infrastructure repairs are qualified for those zero percent interest loans. It's only certain, certain programs that qualify for them, like the water meters, those, that wasn't part of a zero percent interest loan. Other infrastructure needs, you know, you're talking about, you're talking about projects that have been done over the last ten, fifteen years. I, what I was giving you zero percent interest on was the, the stuff that's being proposed in sixteen. So a lot of the stuff from prior years didn't, wasn't a part of the zero interest loan program. Some of it was, but some of it isn't.
Okay, so I got one more question here. I'm looking on, um, the, the annual water sewage rate of, uh, uh, twenty fourteen. It's on page, uh, section one, uh, page six.
Mm-hmm.
And it says, uh, the change, the increase is sixteen point eight percent. That's like the second highest in all of these cities here. Why is it so high?
Well, I think they were just taking from prior years. That's, that's not this year. This is, that's looking backwards.
Yeah, but still, it's only marble heads, a little bit higher than the others. Under, uh, the average is three point five percent.
Yeah, well, like I said, you know, the first two years you ran the enterprise fund, you were a million three and a million seven in deficit. So in order to create full cost recovery, the rates had to be adjusted. So at some point, those rates were adjusted. Now we're at a point where our revenues are matching our expenditures. So, I mean, you can have no rate increase, but you'd be right back to the general fund subsidizing the, the operating cost of the water and sewer fund. So, but the idea is that the rates that are charged are paid for the operation of the water and sewer department.
But would, would that go down now? Are we catching up though?
I hope to, yeah. I mean, like, you know, it's not, believe me, it's not the message I'd love to bring forward here on rate increases. It's just, um, you know, we just do the analysis and, and try to come before the water and sewer commissioners or the, the council with the, the best, uh, you know, the, the leanest budget possible, but to, to still accomplish the goals and, and keep up with the infrastructure needs. Um, and I think we're doing a pretty good job at it. Um, the budgets you have probably have more information than you ever, ever had. I'm trying to give everybody the information they need to better understand why these things are happening. It's not, you know, this isn't done in a vacuum here. We're trying our best to, uh, be, uh, fully transparent and accountable with this stuff. And that's why I have all this information. I wish I had a zero percent rate increase for this year to come before you with. But that would mean I'd probably be coming before you next year and telling you that we're in another deficit. So, um, it's just the reality of it, unfortunately.
All these numbers are awful, they're awful high compared to other communities. And one more thing I wish I wanted to say. Uh, could you tell us again, we're down, we're getting nine hundred and ninety, uh, dollars right now, okay? Now with the seven point five interest, where is the exact amount? Could you add, could you add that up for me? Nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars, uh, seven percent. Because I want the people to know how much is going up. I know it's seven point five, but where is the exact number?
I, I, I'd say seventy-four dollars if you want to do rough math.
A thousand?
But I think I've already said a couple of times, and I imagine it's gonna be more like fifty bucks.
Well, that puts us really over the average. The, the average is fourteen hundred. Now we're, we're over that average, so I don't know if we're still gonna be the ninth lowest in these sixty communities that were surveyed.
A thousand seventy-five is not over the average of fourteen twenty-seven, counsel.
It says here, the, the average, the average MRA community is in fourteen, was fourteen thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
One thousand four hundred and twenty-nine. If you add seventy-five to nine ninety-eight, you get one thousand seventy-three.
Okay, that's, that's why I want.
So one thousand seventy-three is much lower than fourteen twenty-nine. I just don't want the, I just don't want the public to be confused.
That's fourteen hundred twenty-nine dollars. Seventeen hundred is more than that.
Yeah, yeah, you, you, you got the seven over one, call them too far, one zero seven three.
You got a thousand, thousand seventy.
Yeah, that's much less than fourteen thirty-seven.
And that's, uh, a thousand four hundred? Oh, alright, forget it. But anyway, it's, uh, you can see I want to have a high screw. My math is, uh, very bad. Believe me. Well, okay, but, so the average score is going up seven point five percent and it's for a hundred and, a one thousand, uh, seventy dollars?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most of my questions were already answered. I actually have a question on how you bill, and maybe you're not able to answer that, but.
I'm not, yeah, sure, yeah. What's the question?
If you use, say, eleven to twenty, uh, it's nine ninety-four, okay? Yeah, let's go on the rate with, uh, the rate for Everett.
Yeah.
Okay, now say, the bill comes out in January and you estimate it. But in Gi, in, in that time period, I actually used, say, twenty. Now, you estimate that bill at whatever, twenty, twenty-five, whatever you estimated it at. Now, the following bill comes in at sixty. Do you add that twenty-five estimated to the sixty to make it eighty-five? Because now it's at a higher rate. You're billing at a higher rate.
I'd have to look into that.
You're going up another tier.
We don't estimate bills anymore luckily, so, um, that, but in the past, I'd have to do some research exactly how that works. But they're incremental, so when you hit that tier two, it's only that incremental water you're using. So it's, you know, you get, build the tier one till you hit that, say, thirty-one point, and then you, then you go to tier two. It's not like all your water's built at tier two if you use thirty-one. Only the one unit above thirty is built at, you know what I mean? So it's, 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 it's like the, it's like income taxes, you know?
No, but what I'm saying is if you do an estimated bill, uh, and you estimate at.
If we estimate too high?
If you estimate, if you estimate too low.
I understand your question. I have to do some research, but we don't, we don't estimate bills anymore.
So you, you shouldn't, no more estimated bills?
Well, they're all radio reads now. We can read them every day. So, um, I think ninety-nine point nine percent of the meters were changed. I think there was a handful that had a special circumstance, but there should be no more estimated bills.
So that was my question. All the, all the meters have been changed. Most of the meters have been changed.
The program is complete. I think there's a couple of special circumstances, but yes, the, the meters have all been changed, over eight thousand meters.
Now, the, I want to just clarify something. I know I'm asking the same question again, but the rate, uh, it's going up to seven, seven more percent. That what you said? The water bill is going up seven percent.
The rates that are being charged for water, yeah? The rates that are being charged for water, yeah. I mean, everybody's water bill's subject to how much water they use, so.
No, I understand that, but I also want the people to understand that we don't vote on that. It's the water commission that votes on it, and we have no say either way. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Paul Tano.
Thank you. On that thought, because it actually led into my question. Now, I understand the commission is the one that's setting the rate. Okay, I'm, I'm of the school where, you know, there's what you want and there's what you need, okay? If this particular budget was level funded, what projects, what adjustments would be made to the capital improvement projects or the, or the projects way they're laid out? I'll tell you why, before you answer, I'll tell you the reason why I'm asking that question.
I'm not sure I understand the question yet, but.
Well, the question is that, um.
The only capital project could be done are the ones that you vote on and before you, so, um, we, it's not like we couldn't add more projects without an appropriation. You guys appropriate all the money here.
See, up until recently, and I mean recently, prior to, maybe the last couple of years, up to a few years ago, the city council set the rates. Now, granted, I understand that the, the, the commission now sets the rate for water, sewer. But knowing that they're going to come up short, what was the decision process that determined that all these projects were such a high priority that we had to increase the rates as opposed to cutting back on a few of these projects so we necessarily wouldn't have to raise the rates? That's my question.
Well, projects were already vetted through, and, and what you have before you is what's recommended by the mayor, so.
Vetted by who?
By the water department, by me, by the administration, the mayor, chief of staff.
Right, but if they looking, if they're looking at the amount of money they're going to need and they're going to, they're going to come up short, why is it the easiest, the, it seems like the, uh, the path of least resistance is to just charge the taxpayers or the, or the water rate users more money. Now, you know, as you've said before, you know, part of the problem is that the, the water fund was not funded. And that's the reason why we have to keep going back to the, to the budget appropriations to be able to cover that. But the taxpayers have been paying those appropriations, and those same taxpayers are the, are the land, are the property owners who are also paying the water bills. So I'm just concerned that, you know, we're not developing, you know, a blank check mentality here. And I'm not, it's not, I'm not, this isn't on you, but I'm concerned that, um, that we're, our first inclination is to go ahead and add another increase as opposed to reevaluating the, the budget in the first place to seeing if there is other means to be able to save that money to minimize or eliminate an increase.
Well, the role of the council doesn't change. You still have, you have the authority to spend money. So you have before you a spending plan. You have every right to cut that spending plan. That has nothing to do, we just propose and you dispose. So the budget's before you, and we're here to answer any questions about projects that are there. I don't want you to convolute the two things. The rate increase was voted with the understanding that the budget that was presented was the budget that we'd like to see adopted.
Yeah, no, I don't believe I'm convoluting. I'm, I'm saying this, if, if a body, body has the authority to set the rate for, for an increase, they also have the equal responsibility to ensure that everything that money's being spent on is, is what's necessary, what's needed.
Yeah, and they have.
As opposed to what's wanted.
And we presented the budget to the, the commission, and they've reviewed it, and they went along with what the recommendations were. And after that, they, they voted the rate increase that was needed to support that budget. So, I mean, they did, in the PowerPoint presentation, I thought I said it, that they went through the budget, they accepted the budget, and then they voted the rate increase.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Councilor Florio.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. In regards to, uh, before we didn't have the wa, uh, the Water Enterprise, I just want the viewing audience to understand that. If we couldn't pay the MWR at the end of the year, that went on your tax bill. Now it doesn't go on your tax bill anymore. The water user is using it. Is that correct? So basically, what I'm trying to say is, if the, the rate goes up, it's only for the water users. Before, if we didn't have enough money to pay the MWR, it went on your tax bill. That's not happening anymore now.
Yeah, that's correct.
So that's, I, I want to make sure that that's understa, understanding.
Yeah, and I think.
Like, even if we set the rate at five dollars ten years ago, we could set the rate at whatever we wanted. We could make the water bill look really low. And then when we couldn't pay the bill for the water, it went on the tax bill. So that's what I want people to understand.
Right, yeah, the, the, uh, any shortfall of the enterprise fund had to be picked up somewhere. It's the general fund. So, um, I think the goal of having a full cost recovery enterprise fund is that only the people that are using the water and sewer are paying their fair share where in past, and some communities actually by design have the general fund pick up all the water and sewer because of taxes and whatnot. But that's not really, um, I don't think it's as fair, because you could have the elderly people who use very little water subsidizing with their property taxes, something that someone uses a lot more for. So, uh, in, in my opinion, full cost recovery enterprise fund's the best way to go, because everybody's paying their fair share. And, uh, it's our goal to have those revenues come in, support the operation of, of the fund, so.
Yeah, I just want my kids to know they can only take one shower a week now.
Talk to my kids. Councilor Del Sol.
A quick question. On the, if we cut back on this at all, are we stopping projects coming into this year to keep maintaining the water mains itself?
Suppose it depends what you cut. I mean, the, all the capital projects are subject to an appropriation of either a bond authorization or some kind of appropriation. So, you know, depending on which you pick, you would slow down process on that particular thing. I mean, just like any other budget, you can cut a line. Doesn't necessarily mean it might be that particular line that's cut. It's the bottom line. But I think with regard to capital, yeah, if you don't vote an appropriation of retained earnings to fund some sewer repairs, then, yeah. It'll, it'll hinder that part of the operation. If you don't fund the vehicles, then, yeah, we don't have the proper equipment to go out and do the best job we could. So I guess it's all relevant to what particular item you may choose to, to, to.
How much you cut back, how much you cut back is going to reflect on what you're going to not be able to do during the season.
Yeah, right. I mean, if you don't approve a bond authorization for a project, obviously, we can't do that project. And if you don't approve an appropriation of retained earns for a particular piece of equipment or a particular, uh, you know, smaller project, stormwater or sewer, then we don't, we're not able to use those monies to do those repairs. Now, in the event that there's a, an emergency, I mean, if there's an emergency water break, we, whether there's money there or not, we go to the DOS, hey, we got an emergency, we go spend it. We're going to have to come back before you. And a lot of these appropriations could be tricky, you know, we budget for emergency water repairs. We don't know what's the emergency's going to be, but the, the nice part is if we don't spend it, it closes out to retained earns, and it comes back before you, and you have the right to appropriate that money, I, you know, as, as long as it's part of the water and sewer enterprise. So, um, I think with capital, yeah, you can pick and choose, but, you know, from an operation perspective, you might cut a salary line, or you might cut an expenditure line. But that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be for that particular person or that particular line item and the expense, so. I don't know if that answered your question.
No, you did, you did. Thank you.
If there are no other questions from the body, I actually have a few if I could do from the chair, unless anyone has any others. All right, we'll go to the Personnel Services page, and do we now actively have anybody in the water superintendent position? Oh, you're, okay. Is that a, is that a permanent position, Ernie, or?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I'm just going to ask some questions, so don't take it personally, because Ernie, I know you're a hard worker, and I do think you're worth your weight in gold. But I was just looking at some numbers on the paper. I know at one point in time, I think it was fiscal year fourteen, I was listed as a deputy director. And then we converted that over last fiscal year into a water superintendent. I think there was a bump of about four thousand. And then, uh, the department request is level funded from last year. And then the mayor's request is an additional ten thousand dollar increase on that.
The department, the request was the direction that we gave the departments to fund it, to level fund it. And the mayor's recommendation reflects the salary study that was done.
Okay, so.
That's why it's laid out like that, you know.
Okay.
We basically give the departments a message that says, here's how you're to treat your salary lines, here's how you treat your expense lines. So the departmental request is basically level funded. That's, level fund your budget for salaries. And then the mayor's recommendation is, is based upon the salary study that, like I said, we're going to roll out that study when, uh, when the total operating budget comes out.
All right, so that, that one line item from fiscal year fourteen, fiscal year sixteen, is up like fourteen thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay. Now, the.
I mean, the salary study was meant to, you know, try to make sure we're paying competitive rates for these positions, so.
Sure, I understand that. So the assistant water superintendent is the position that was phased out, it's phasing back in. When it phased out, it was about fifty-six thousand dollars, and now we're phasing it back in at seventy-five thousand dollars. So I'm assuming that's what we think the market rate is for that at this point?
Yeah, that's.
Nineteen thousand increase?
That's what it's going to cost to get that licensed, uh, person in here.
Individual in, okay. On the summary sheet, uh, I guess would be, I don't know if you call it line four fifty or page sheet four fifty?
Okay.
Now, I'm assuming the discrepancies between, um, where we were last year and what you're looking at, the final product, is because it's kind of a work in progress. So you're getting, you're getting this submitted to us at the end of February, so we still have four months in the fiscal year. And that's why the numbers will look like they don't jive.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, on the salaries line, we went fiscal year fourteen, it, it looked like it, it almost doubled in a four-month period. Why, on the salary line, why would that happen?
I'm sorry, are you talking about the, the water with the gray bar above it?
Yeah, with, you know, water four fifty, sheet four fifty.
Yeah, so you're looking at salary line?
Yeah. So I'm looking at fiscal year expended was actually four hundred and fifteen thousand seventy-five.
That was for, that's the year, fiscal year fourteen. That was, how much was expended in that fiscal year? So that's a hundred percent of fiscal year fourteen expenditures.
And when that came in, in February, or whenever the date was for that, it was listed at two sixty-two eight. Why would it jump so much in four months?
I mean, that number shouldn't have jumped at all. That's, that's exactly what was expended in fourteen. I'd have to.
No, I know the four fifteen is, is a final figure, but I've got sheets I was looking at that shows that it jumped almost in half in four months. And I was a little concerned about that. But on that line, we'll, we'll move on. On that line, we've got the fiscal year two thousand sixteen requested salaries of seven thirty. And the mayor is recommending seven hundred and seventy, which is a forty thousand dollar increase. We've covered ten thousand on the superintendent. I'm trying to figure out where the other, where the thirty thousand is, is on those numbers. Can you point those out to me?
Yeah. We changed, um, again, we got rid of W five, so, um, we moved W five position to W seven. That was, um, some of it. And last year, we had, um, budgeted a senior county clerk for thirty hours a week. We have her up to thirty-five hours a week. And then where, where applicable, we've, um, we've made the adjustments for the steps of the particular people that may be working in collective bargaining. Like I said, we didn't put in any caller increases, but when the positions, um, do a, a salary step, then those are built in. So if you look down, the mayor's recommended, you'll, you'll see that there were some salary steps put in there. We cut out the craftsman on the bottom, and we added that assistant water superintendent, so.
Okay.
That's generally all of them. I mean, I, I don't have like a reconciliation spreadsheet, but I can certainly get, get you some specifics on that.
Okay.
It's just kind of some of the gyrations of, of, of the salaries and the positions.
All right, thank you. And then, um, on, staying on that four fifty sheet, under the expense portions, we've got expended so far fiscal year two thousand fifteen on pipe fitting valves. We are at thirty-one thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars, and we're looking to fund that next year at one fifty. It was funded at one fifty fiscal year two thousand fifteen, but we've only expended thirty-one. Do we anticipate that we're going to be doing work that would incorporate the, the need for such a large line item?
I'll defer to Ernie on that.
Yes, I, um, I go through my stock, and I probably should replenish it as quickly as I go as I use it, especially after this, this one that we did.
Okay, so you do, you do anticipate using it, okay. And then with the, uh, in the same vein, the sewer line cleanings, budgeted at a hundred and five. Right now, it is at fifty, just under sixty thousand. Fiscal year two thousand fourteen, we expended forty-three thousand. So we've got some room. We've got about forty-five thousand dollars worth of additional sewer lines. Do we think we need that for the following year?
I mean, yeah, the.
It, it, it looks like, I know you're trying to do the best you can to, to ensure that you've got things lined up. Just looks like from, from the untrained eye, it just looks like there might be a little extra cushion that need be.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we could probably do a better job at, um, doing more sewer line cleaning to expend that money. I don't think it's from a lack of sewer lines that need to be cleaned.
Only so many hours in a day and so many people.
Yeah, I think it's the, you know, Ernie's got two people out on work as companies, lacking equipment, so we, you know, we're really trying to. We, we really want to put the best operation forward, and, um, and those dollars, again, if they're not expended, they get turned back into the funds. So, um, it's a little short sighted. I think if we start cutting those, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I hear what you're saying, but, um.
I'm just asking to get a better understanding, and, and you've provided the answer. What it is, is if we had the resources and manpower, we would be able to utilize the funds to take care of those issues. It's just there's not enough hours in a day, not enough folks.
Yeah, and I didn't bring it with me, but you, on this particular report on expended, it may not, uh, be indicative of what's encumbered because of the way this report runs out.
Okay.
So that other report that you get on a monthly basis may show you that there's another thirty, forty thousand that's encumbered that actually hasn't reflected in this line. I don't have that report in front of me, but this particular line only may show what the bills that have been paid out the door, but not the work in progress.
The, uh, the stormwater expenses line, it's a new line this year. We haven't had it in the past. We've got it budgeted for one thirty-five. Could you just address that a little bit more, what we're looking at, what kind of expenses, how to be incorporating that line item? That we've got, that we have a new line item at one thirty-five?
Sure, the, um.
He would, well, since that, that got dropped into my department, that money would be used to, uh, clean, clean the catch basins, clean, jet raw the drainage, drainage pipes. So that's where this, this, that's where this money's going to be going into.
It's basically, we, we, we look at it at, um, the, the maintenance and the cleaning of the, of the catch basin and the stormwater, and, uh, money for contractors to do, um, the telescope, those, uh, you know, those lines to see where blockages are. Again, we're trying to get more comprehensive on our, um, you know, IDDE stuff, so.
Were, were those services we weren't doing before?
No, they're services that we've been finding other, you know, there's other lines that we, you know, maintenance repairs or professional services. We, we're kind of borrowing from one to the other, but we're trying to.
All right, so you'd find the funds from another line item.
Yeah.
But now you're just trying to.
It's now basically.
Apples to apples. This is what that function is, and let's know what that costs.
Exactly.
All right, and I have one last question. I looked at the, um, capital improvement plan in the culvert over at Lower Spring Street. It looks like, uh, we're not really addressing that until fiscal year eighteen and nineteen.
Well, um, it's, part of it is, we try, you know, you try to do a plan with some expenditures evenly, so you don't front load everything up. We know there's an issue with the culvert there. We know there's issues, uh, citywide. And what I'm hoping is that this, um, this study that's being done this spring and summer is going to start to hone in on not just being aware that there's a problem, but some fixes and, and what needs to be done, and get some closer, some specific numbers so we can start planning for that. So this is almost designed to make sure that people know that there is an issue there, and we're, we got it on the, on the radar. But, um, I don't have a solid number to come forward and say, I need one point six million dollars. So sometimes it's just meant to make sure that we don't forget that, that, that's an issue, and we got to address it.
In my understanding with the, with the culvert over there, that part of the issue is liability questions. Who's responsible and all of that? And that's kind of pushing everything in the air as well.
Yeah, it's a little bit messy.
Yeah, okay, all right, so.
But we're, we're, we're actively trying to resolve these issues, so, um, you know, this, the, you take a snapshot in time at this capital plan. I tried to lay it out the best I could, but, you know, two weeks from now, this could change, you know, depending on something happening. So you kind of, it's like a balance sheet. You're getting it once a year, and you'll see this, but next year, things could move around depending on.
And I understand that it's not an exact science, and it's, it's tricky, and I do appreciate how much information you give us. I know that there's a ton here, and all you need to do is sit there and read it if you really feel like doing it. But there's a lot of information. feel, really feel like doing it, but there's a lot of information there, provides us with a, a better baseline, understanding where the money's going, and that's what it's all about. So, I thank you for answering my questions. Are there any other questions from the board? Seeing none, except a motion to excuse customary, thanks. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
What's the pleasure of the council?
This too. This looks humongous. I'm thirty-one hundred and eighty-eight. Did I make a motion?
Short, Counselor.
I'd like to, I think the salaries are way too high. I'd like to make a, a motion to cut the salaries to three, three percent to the cost of living, and, um, could save some money there. I don't know if I can touch the management, but I'd like to cut it down to just the cost of living, uh, three percent, uh, raise across the board for, for the employees. And as far as the management, I don't know how we can do that, but I'd make that motion.
So, the, the only thing I would raise with that, and you're more than able to make the motion, a lot of the salaries that we're talking about are union issues, so we have to be very careful we don't cut in too much, but, uh, you do three percent of non-union issues if you want to do something like that, but, uh, the motion on the floor, is there a second on it?
Mr. Chairman?
Is, is there a second on the motion?
No.
There's no second on the motion. Counselor Hanlon?
No, I'm not going to...
Okay, so the motion before the body right now is to refer this out to our next council meeting. All those in favor?
No.
Is there, is there a recommendation?